Okay, we'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. If able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up this evening is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda would be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. In accordance with governing bodies' rules and procedures, the city reserves right to refuse public comments that are personal and pertinent or slanderous. We did have a sign-up sheet. I have one person signed up at this point, but that doesn't preclude other people from coming forward. And again, if you do come forward, it would be for an item that isn't currently on our agenda. So I think this first one is, says it's trash, so that is on our agenda, so I won't call you forward at this time, sir. But does anyone else have anything for the council this evening they'd like to bring forward that isn't on our agenda, as far as a public comment? Okay, I see nobody rushing to the podium, so I assume anything else that might want to come forward later will be because of the agenda. I will close out the public items. Okay, the next item up is the consent agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Now, we've got several items this evening. Is there anybody that wants anything removed from our consent agenda? See nobody that way? Anybody this way? We're all good? Okay, well, having seen nobody want anything removed, I would entertain a motion. Oh, Mr. Silvers, go ahead. Sorry to see you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve consent agenda items one through four.
Okay, we have a motion, and Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is the mayor's report. First item on the mayor's report is an employee service awards for the first quarter of 2025. I see Mr. Engel coming forward, and I'll just come down and meet him, Mr. Engel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great opportunity, the first meeting to be kind of our quarters. We look back on the previous quarter where we recognized our employees that had a benchmark anniversary, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, sometimes thirty or thirty-five. So we used to do that once a year, but we decided to space things out and give people opportunity to bring their friends and family in here and celebrate with the community, and also for the council to share their recognition with our folks that have had one of those benchmarked dedicated levels of service. So we're here to honor a handful of employees. The first ones that we're going to recognize this evening are for five years. Our first employee is Dawn Pyle with our Parks and Recreation Park. If I can get after the photo, if you can kind of stand by, we're going to do a group photo also at the end of that, please. Our second certificate of service is for Councilmember Bruce Caldwell, five years of dedicated service. Next certificate of service will be for another council member, Wendy Yodrich, with five years of dedicated service. We do have one more that was five years and unfortunately had to go home early today, but we do want to recognize Police Officer Jordan Barry with five years of dedicated service. Next, in our, in our Park and Rec Department, ten years of dedicated service to City Mayor Joe Segura. Also with ten years of dedicated service in our Public Works Department, Tom Wininger. And finally, with twenty years of dedicated service in our Police Department, Nick Wileri. And then, just like we'd like to recognize our benchmarked employees that have hit five, ten years, yeah, we've got a handful of new employees that also started in the last quarter. We want to introduce to our council and to the public. We think that it's important that we put those up in front of the council and public also. We've got several that aren't here, so Beth Hopkins, a new Public Works, basis worker's not here, Alyssa Ross in our Park and Rec Department, and Zoe Yandel in our Park and Rec aren't here, but we do have two new employees that are here that started last quarter. Nicholas Bobato is a Park and Rec attendant. Another, the other employee that's new this last quarter is Megan Borth, who is our new Finance Director. I'll say hi to them, introduce yourself, and give them another five years, and they'll be up here accepting their benchmark award. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Okay, next item up with the mayor's report is a proclamation. I always enjoy reading these because usually they're important, and I would just like to read that this evening. Whereas, more than 400,000 Americans are alive today thanks to the generosity and courage of organ donors, and whereas, during National Donate Life Month, we honor donors and their families who have turned pain into purpose by sharing the gift of life with loved ones who, or those whom they have never met. And whereas, more than 100,000 people, including 2,100 children, are currently on the national transplant waiting list, and more than 6,000 Americans die each year while waiting for a life-saving organ transplant. And whereas, in Kansas, nearly 500 people are on a waiting list to receive life-saving transplants. And whereas, we each have the power to change that, as one person can save up to eight lives through organ donation after they die, and improve another 75 lives through eye and tissue donation, and thousands of others can choose to donate an organ while still living. And whereas, while transplantation continues to increase sustainably substantially and meet the needs of many people with organ failure, we must continue our efforts to shorten the waiting list and encourage organ donation. Now, therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of Merriam-Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Donate Life Month. With this year's theme of Let Life Sing, I encourage every person in our community to celebrate the life, the gift of life, by becoming an organ, eye, tissue, or bone marrow donor. Proclaimed on the 14th day of April 2025, Bob Pape, Mayor. Okay, so, for all you donors out there, a round of applause for all those donors. We appreciate that. Okay, and the last item up for me is, I always like to, and this is rather lengthy, so I'll read through this quickly. But we'd like to talk a little bit about the things that go on around the, for the last month or the last couple of weeks itself, with myself and the council. Okay, I met with Jenna, and we did a seven days of kindness video. Although the official campaign is over, I would encourage everyone to continue to be kind to others. We need to be more tolerant of others' opinions and accept that differing opinions does not make them a bad person. We had two sessions, several council members in each session that met with Drake Development to discuss his proposed project on the north side of Shemishon Parkway. We're excited to see that he's willing to provide us a grocery store at that location. So you can applaud if you want on that. That's all, that's, okay. And, because it's not done yet, but we, it is on the plans, in a restaurant in an apartment building. I and several council members were lucky enough to see the Oscar Mayer Wiener Bill. I even got a new T-shirt with their logo on it from one of our residents in the local business. I attended the Overland Park Fire Department Awards Banquet Ceremony. I was given a commemorative coin at that event. All of our council also received a special commemorative coin that depicts Merriam's 75th anniversary. For those that don't know it, we're 75 years old this year. Thank you, Chief Long, for that special coin. I and several council members attended the Shemishon Parkway and I-35 focus group discussion. There were several alternates that were discussed for intersection along 67th Street, Shemishon Parkway, and Johnson Drive. KDOT and County are also part of this group. The council had a special council meeting between our regular council meetings this, this time. And I and council member attended the Tim Murphy Art Gallery Opening Night Show. I liked to attend that one because Director Slocum always provides great snacks and refreshments. So, great it's also being displayed there, too. So get down there before it changes. Several council members attended the Merriam Employee Party. It's my understanding that was a lot of fun. Wish I could have been there. I attended the Johnson County Qantas Meeting. I and several council members attended the Johnson County State of the County Address by our, our county chairman. And I'm glad to report that everything is going great in the county, and we're one of the top 10 counties in the nation. I mean, it's, we're doing phenomenal. I and several council members attended the Merriam Employee Luncheon, which taught us how to eat healthier. Obviously, I haven't started that yet, but I've now got the knowledge, so that's good. I attended the Johnson County and Wyntott County Mayor's Dinner. It was hosted by Mayor McCullough at the Lake Veracan Country Club. It's a beautiful facility, very old. Our speaker was a judge, and I forgot her last name, but she spoke about the Quandero Preservation Project, if none of you are aware of that. I would, it was new to me. Johnson County and Wyntott County attorneys have taken up this project as a fundraising to preserve the history of that location. This was a hub for the Underground Railroad to get slaves to safety back in the day. Of course, you know, Kansas and Missouri were on opposite sides of that unfortunate part of our history. I and council member met with Mr. Engel, developed tonight's agenda. A council member attended the Mark Housing Coalition Meeting. This group's focused on finding solutions for affordable housing. I and several council members attended the Public Art Committee Meeting. This group interviewed the final three applicants and their project proposals, actually with the artists, and they came to consensus to recommend one of those, coming up shortly, to the rest of our council. Councilmembers Chaveta and Silver sit on this committee, and our thanks go out to you two and your entire committee for consideration of each proposal and your selection. I really liked it. Okay, and that's going to be coming forward to the whole council here shortly. I and several council members met with the city auditor to discuss how, how we thought our finances were being handled and address any of our concerns, and I didn't have any. I don't know if the other council members did, but that concludes my report. Is there anything I missed of other individuals that I missed? Nothing. All right, well, I will end the mayor's report, then. Looks like first item up is consider a donation to the Johnson County Family Safety Center. We got, we got Chief coming forward to address this at this time at the podium.
And I'm going to introduce our District Attorney, Steve Howe. He's going to come up here and explain to you what the family safety centers are, why we need one here in Johnson County, and what the purpose of a possible donation to see would make to fund the start of this.
Good evening. My name's Steve Howe. I'm Johnson County District Attorney, and it's my honor to be here, and thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council for giving me a few minutes to talk about the Family Safety Center and, and why we're trying to create one, and what it means for the city of Merriam, more importantly. And so what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about, first of all, why we need it and what it is. And so, you know, in Johnson County, we've been very blessed to have some great partner agencies, and you're very familiar with the names that I'm going to give you. Safe Home, which is our domestic violence shelter. Sunflower House, which is our child assessment center. And then Moxa, which is an agency that provides help for sexual assault victims. We have great, great agencies that work with my office and the police department each and every day. And so it's not like we're starting from ground zero. But what's, what's consistent about all those agencies, the law enforcement partners, as well as my office, is we are missing an opportunity to provide greater services to the victims of violence. And what I mean by that is, we realize that instead of having one place for victims to go, that many victims, when they're in their darkest hours, being victims of violence, whether it be sexual assault, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's a child that's been physically or sexually abused, instead of having one place where they can go and get the services that they need, right now, these victims are having to travel around to different locations to get those services. And that, that provides or eliminates the opportunity for us to not only start the healing process for those individuals, but to keep them engaged as we go through the criminal justice system. What a family safety center is, is a one-stop shop for victims of violence, and that's why they've been very successful. There's been over 130 of these centers across this country that have thrived on the concept of providing services at one location. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about what those services would be and how it would look. First of all, for victims of domestic violence, legal resources to get protection orders, where they can go to one location. Donation of clothes. Many, if you talk to domestic violence victims, many of them have to leave their home, away from their abusers. They have nothing. And many of these centers have donations from companies where they can get clothes for themselves or their children, so they can basically continue to live in this critical situation. Finding a place for them to stay is another opportunity, working with different county and city services agencies to help them in that way. Medical services, whether it's a sexual assault exam or other physical exams, having a little clinic on site to provide those resources for those individuals. A place for the Merriam Police Department and other agencies to actually interview the victim at that same location, so they don't have to travel everywhere. But actually, law enforcement agencies would actually be present in that safety center to be able to, again, a one-stop shop for everybody. The additional thing is having our crime lab be able to take pictures of injuries, which is so critically important, not only on the day that they make the report, but also on additional days. A daycare, so if a victim has to go testify either for a protection order hearing or in court for my office, that there is daycare available to them, so they can not be stressed out about what do I do with my kids when I go to court. These are the kind of services that family safety centers provide. And so, you know, I already talked about the great partner agencies that we have, but we think we can do better. And that's why a representative from Safe Home and Sunflower House is on our Board of Directors. I think that's pretty telling. It's also supported by Moxa. We have several law enforcement agencies that have part of their staff on the Board of Directors for the Family Safety Center, and I'm on there as well. So I'm act, I'm making this ask as your district attorney, but also a member of the Board of Directors for the Family Safety Center. Just to talk a little bit about, okay, what's the need in our community? To give you an idea, my, my office files about 7,000 cases a year. And so 7,000 cases, 1,500 to 1,700 of those are domestic violence cases. Last year, we filed 85, I believe, out of the city of Merriam, just domestic violence. And so there is a need in your community. We would also use the Family Safety Center for elder abuse cases, for sexual assault cases. And I know that the city of Merriam has a large senior citizen population, and we all know, and I see each and every day, that our elderly population is the first area that identity theft or fraud perpetrators look to, to commit that kind of violence and fraud. And so there is a need there in your community. Just to give you an idea and compare it to other family safety centers, Oklahoma City has 709,000 people. They saw 6,800 clients and provided 40,000 different types of services to those individuals. Tulsa, which is a smaller one, is 411,000. They provided help for 6,800 clients and 14,000 types of services. To give you a perspective of what we do here in Johnson County, we provided 827 protection orders last year and did 2,100 referral for services. That is just my office. So if you think about it, the city of Merriam and all the other cities across this great county, we would be able to meet some of the criteria that we're talking about, or the level of services that we see in some of these other agencies. So when I was talking to the Alliance of Hope, which is the organization that would help us start this process, what they said was remarkable about these family safety centers is, half of the people that come to those safety centers don't actually follow through with filing criminal charges. These are people that are too worried about filing charges, or for one reason or another, don't file charges with the police department and my office, but we're still providing a need. And so he said that that was a shocking part for each of these safety centers, is all these other individuals that are concerned enough to go there to get help, but don't want to engage the DA's office or law enforcement. And I say kudos to them, because whether they engage us or not, if we can provide services to them and break the cycle of violence, get them away from their perpetrators, we win. And I don't have to file charges in order for us to be victorious over violence in our community. And so that was, I thought, very telling, and it made me wonder, like, well, how many people are we missing right now in our communities, here in Merriam as well, that we're not serving because we don't have a center like that? So the Hope Alliance is a facilitator. They help work with all the agencies, and their job is to engage the community. I can tell you right now, once we start this process, somebody from this council is going to be as part of a working group, or maybe more than one of you. And what they want to do is get all the different cities together and talk about what are your needs? What do we need to do in order to provide for our community? And so they engage the, the community itself, and do our work groups, and go through the process, so we figure out what does that family safety center look like for Johnson County. And then you start looking at, where do we put it, so we can serve the community, make it easy to be accessible for people that are victims of violence. And so in order to get the ball rolling, I, I went to your chief, as well as the rest of the police chiefs and the sheriff, a couple of months ago, and I said, I'd like to make an ask. And so part of how safety centers are successful is engagement by the community and the cities they serve. And that, of course, means money, right? And so my ask is to ask you to support for us to start this process, and then once we get this process going, we'll probably be back, and I'm going to be totally upfront with you, and ask for a yearly donation towards the safety center. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, that's really how things work when we engage these. I'm asking the larger cities to donate larger portions, so depending on your population base. And so your chief asked me, he says, well, how much should we ask for in this instance? And I would say the city of Merriam would be somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 of seed money in order for us to be able to engage the Hope Alliance. The Hope Alliance charges $80,000 to help us put the paperwork together, to do the work, work groups and the planning, to figure out what we need in the center. And considering the, I've got, and if you want to see it, I can show you the notebook and all the information that they would do as part of this planning process. I actually think 80 grand is pretty cheap in today's world to be able to facilitate that. And so I'm asking that the city of Merriam join the other cities. I know they're, they've got them on their agendas. I know the city of Overland Park has already agreed to a $20,000 donation. I know that the Criminal Justice Advisory Council with the county has made this a priority. And so we're going to be asking the county to give, on behalf of not only my office and the sheriff's office, but also the county in general for an ask as well, and that's going to be happening in the next 30 to 60 days. Our plan is to have the money in hand, so we can start the process next, or this fall. So that's my request. I think it's something that would provide value to the people of Merriam, as well as all the other cities in this great county. And I'll stop talking, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, Mr. Mayor or other members of the council.
Do you have any, any questions for District Attorney Howe? Okay, looks like you did a really good job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for coming this evening. Well, with that, I guess, we have, well, I guess we have a motion, don't we?
I would like to make a motion.
I would be glad to entertain a motion, Ms. Haynes.
I move that the council approve a donation of $10,000 to the Johnson County Family Safety Center Foundation.
Okay, we have a motion. Go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Mayor, a second, that motion.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
I gladly say aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, District Attorney Howe, and it looks like you got your answer, so.
Thank you very much, City, everybody. On behalf of the Board of Directors, thank you very much, and as I said, we'll be in touch. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next item up this evening is purchase of Axon Standards. Looks like Chief Bluff into the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider the purchase of a product called Axon Standards. Basically, what Axon Standard is going to provide us is, we have lots of different reports that we gather and collate to include our use of force. We document our use of forces. Our PTO program, which is our new officer training program, training, and we do evaluations, not to mention a couple of other different things that are going to be in this program. We currently use another vendor for these things. We started with that company a few years ago, when the state was going to require us to do online use of force submittals, and that's what this product was going to bring us. And we engaged this company with several other law enforcement agencies in Johnson County. However, the product that the company provided is not what they promised us. It has not done what we, what our expectations were, and us, Merriam, and some of the other agencies have engaged. agencies that have engaged with that prior company, uh, have looked for, uh, other, uh, software to use. Uh, it was fortuitous that Axon, who is the company that provides our tasers and our in-car and body camera system, which we, uh, just purchased this year, uh, also provides a software that accomplishes all these things. Uh, we have been engaged with them since we bought their, uh, camera product. Um, Major Brokaw did the majority of the work in comparing the two products. Uh, we are very satisfied with what this product would, uh, offer us, and we are asking to, uh, go ahead and terminate our contract with our previous software vendor and engage a five-year contract with Axon and purchase the standards. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief McGlaughlin? Okay, this way, Ms. Ans, go ahead.
Are we going to be able to import the data you've already been gathering into Axon?
We cannot import the data that we currently have, but we have a way to get that data for, out of that system and keep it, um, so that we still have it. It just won't be inside the Axon standard.
It'll be separate.
It'll be separate, but.
Okay.
We'll be, uh, we've already looked at, we're, we're good with how we're going to have to manage that, so.
Good, Ms. Shaveta.
Um, will we be charged a fee to discontinue our current contract with our current vendor?
We are not. Uh, we, our current, current contract with our vendor, uh, is up. It's an automatic renewal in May of this year, which we already have the money budgeted for that renewal. Um, s, if, so that will put us, uh, the implementation period for the new product, it probably won't come online until January of next year. Um, once we cancel the contract in writing, uh, any, uh, months that we had paid for it in advance, we get credit back from that company, so.
Any other questions, Chief McGlaughlin? Go ahead, Mr. Cozmeier.
Um, yeah, no, I read in your, in the write-up, right, that with our current system, it seems like if we need to make changes to any of the forms, we've got to go through Benchmark or the company that serves Benchmark and that. I don't know, this, this setup seems a lot like it's going to save a lot of time, just for every single officer.
Major Brokaw a lot of time because he spends a lot of his time on the phone with Benchmark, trying to get him to do things that we want him to do, so. He's very excited about that.
That's good to hear.
Any other questions for Chief?
Thank you.
No questions, thank you, sir. Well, with that, um, I would entertain a motion if we want to. Okay, uh, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve the purchase of Axon Standards.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? This way? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and next item up is consider approval or resolution. Looks like we have Director Dyer coming to the podium.
Be with me for a second here, Council. Here, Mayor, Council Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. Also like to introduce Jacob Lider here on my left. He's with, uh, attorney with our bond counsel, Cootec Rock. Um, so this is obviously something to do with our I-35 redevelopment district. Um, back on Marshmallow First, you all, uh, voted and approved an ordinance to expand the district to include the recently purchased buildings that we, uh, from the library that we had purchased. Um, also with that amendment and that change, you also created a new project area, Project Area O. Um, real briefly, and you've heard me say this before, our I-35 redevelopment district plan, that's kind of the 60,000-foot view of what we think should happen in our redevelopment district, the project plans are actually kind of the 30,000-foot view, um, of what we think should happen in a specific area within our district. And then, um, as we're familiar with, when we get, uh, development plans, rezonies, that's when we get real specific about what should occur within the district. Obviously, our I-35 redevelopment district, that is the district we use a lot to help, uh, do public prior, public-private partnerships with developers. Most, uh, recent example is Marion Grand Station across the street. Um, so what is being asked you this evening is to approve a resolution to establish June, um, 16th of this year as the date for the public hearing on the project plan. Uh, the project plan area is up there on your screen. It's, uh, outlined in red. It's, uh, sixty-second Terrace on the north, Antioch Road on the east, Shawnee Mission Parkway, uh, on the south, and then IKEA Way that is on the west. Uh, the properties are outlined in yellow. Those are the recently purchased, uh, properties that the city purchased from the library. So again, all you're being asked for this evening is to establish, is to approve a resolution to establish June 16th as the day to have the public hearing on this project plan. I will also remind you that June 16th is also the date in which we're anticipating having a number of other things related to the redevelopment of this area, um, uh, the redevelopment agreement, as well as the rezoning, plat, and the development plan for this area. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Dyer? Questions, wait for Director Dyer. Okay, thank you, sir.
I got the next one, so I'll just sit here for a second.
You go stand there, okay. Well, I would entertain a motion then, if we move forward. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Cozmeier.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I move that the council approve a resolution setting June 16th, 2025, as the date for the public hearing to consider the Shawnee Mission Parkway, IKEA Way, West 62nd Terrace, and Antioch Road redevelopment project plan, Project Area O.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? This way? Oh, which way? This way?
I don't care.
Okay, Ms. Ans.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like the next item up, Director Dyer has as well. Go ahead, sir.
So the next item is to, uh, consider approval of a contract with Denton Escavating doing business as Midland Wrecking for the demolition of those two buildings we just had up on the screen. Um, obviously, uh, that is a hi, the intersection of Antioch Shawnee Mission Parkway, that is a highly troubled intersection. We all are anticipating that area to be redeveloped to, um, a higher and better use, more intense use i- in that area, and so we feel that it's important now to get, uh, the, those two buildings demoed in order to give the opportunity for that redevelopment to occur. We also feel like, uh, the demolition of those buildings is going to occur, uh, no matter what, and getting it done sooner obviously is potential to save money because as time goes on, that obviously increases of costs, things like that. So, uh, we partnered with Monarch Acquisitions. They are the project manager on the south side, and they're also probably the folks who have the most knowledge of all the utilities or, um, within this corridor, uh, to solicit bids. Uh, we got six bids returned to us. The low bid, uh, again, was Denton Escavating. Uh, they've done a number of other projects with this, a local company, uh, they've been excellent to work with, and so staff wholeheartedly supports them getting the bid. Uh, they will be required to get a, um, performance sponsor, this is, again, as I mentioned, as we all know, a very important intersection, we'll make sure everything's protected and everything, uh, you know, have that protections in place. That bomb would have been purchased by any of the other bidders. So we're asking to have, uh, council approve, uh, not to exceed about $156,000 for the demo of those library buildings. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, uh, I have a question. In the event that this is, um, ratified this evening, how, what's the timetable for that, uh, those buildings to come down?
Uh, we, uh, anticipate those being down hopefully mid-June, mid to late June, yes.
Very quick.
So, uh, we've already engaged, uh, the asbestos abatement. Uh, that was a contract that was a much lower price, something that, uh, city administrator signed, so we've already started that process, so yes, we hope to have them down very quick.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for Director Dyer?
I have.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Ans.
I just want you to talk about how traffic is going to be managed as they haul away debris and things like that.
There, we'll obviously have to do a traffic control plan. We aren't anticipating, we're anticipating most of the activity to occur on the lot, not actually in the street or anything like that at this point in time. The anticipation, usually with demos, uh, demolitions usually will, uh, impact traffic flow if there's, uh, when we actually have to, it's not me, but when the contractor has to cut the utility at the street or in the street, so that's usually when you'll see some sort of traffic management happen. We're not anticipating at this point in time, uh, cutting utilities that, um, at or in the street because we will hopefully can reuse those existing, uh, existing service lines.
You expect that they will do things off rush hour, given what that corner is like?
Uh, I, I suspect that they will manage that and not do it, just very much like what the, um, it was a different company, but the company on the south side did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Shaveta.
I just have a question about the asbestos remediation. Is, is it already started or when?
Not.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll, it'll hopefully start, uh, but believe this week.
Okay, great, thanks.
Other questions, Director Dyer? Yeah, I see no other questions, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, and, uh, I would entertain a motion for this. Ms. Ans.
I move that we approve a contract with Denton Escavating, who's doing business as Midland Wrecking for the demolition of the library building, which is 8,700 Shawnee Mission Parkway, the library maintenance building, which is 6235 Slater Street, and associated improvements for an amount not to exceed $156,000.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? Go ahead, Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like next item up is, uh, consider approval of an ordinance establishing a collection service, and we've got Ms. Card at the podium.
Hello, good evening, Council and Mayor. We tonight are having our first discussion of our final step in the single hauler process. If you would pull up, thank you, Julie. Um, the single hauler process establishing trash recycling and yard waste services for residential properties throughout the city of Merriam. I want to take everyone back to when we first started discussing this on a, on a more serious level. This question was specifically asked in the 2024 community survey whether Merriam should implement a citywide c- contract to provide trash and recycling services, and 65% of our residents responded favorably to that idea. Um, there were 19, 19% neutral and 17% disagreed. Um, we don't know why they were neutral or disagreed, but, um, we have gotten a lot of community feedback since. Um, that's why we continued, that's why we started this process and we've continued throughout. Um, we didn't just gather public feedback just this one time. Throughout the entirety of the process, we've gathered a substantial amount of feedback, and I will say, um, it, the feedback that we've received really mirrors the survey responses. Um, so tonight, what you're being asked to do is the first reading of an ordinance establishing single hauler service. We're not asking to waive that first reading. We understand how important this process is for, for not only you all, but for the community as well. And so, uh, the first reading will be asked, uh, tonight, and if you all, uh, proceed with that, then at our next meeting on April 28th will be the, um, second reading of the ordinance and establishing the contract with the provider that we're going to discuss here in a little bit. At the very beginning of this process, um, you all established goals. That's, uh, this is a very regulated process through state statute. Per that state statute, you all do have to establish purpose and goals for moving forward with this process. Um, I can confidently say that I believe that we hit every single one of these goals. Obviously, we haven't implemented the service just yet, um, but dealing with some of the other communities that have moved forward with this process, and now knowing the information that we have going through the bid process, um, I can confidently say that we've, um, hit every single one of these goals. We've talked about this a lot, um, not only in this room, but, uh, with the community as well. Starting back to that citizen survey from last year, um, and, uh, almost every single council meeting since, you've adopted, um, we've held two public hearings, um, that were noticed to the public per state statute, uh, following that process. And then tonight, um, as I mentioned, is the final, the first step of the final step of the process. Not only did we, uh, go above and beyond what we feel state statute's intent was, um, the mayor did establish a single hauler work group that consisted of community members, um, a representative of Johnson County, um, and then a, a couple of council members as well, really to deep dive into the plan, what that's going to look like for Merriam, specifically how we're going to, um, service our residents, and then ultimately what the bid package was, uh, to go out to bid. Um, we, there were a number of meetings held, um, all of the trash haulers were noticed. That's a state statutory requirement, all the, the, um, licensed providers, not only in Merriam, um, but the work group recommended that we open that, um, list of providers up to anybody licensed in Johnson County, so that's a few more haulers than we have just here in Merriam. So there were a number of haulers that participated in that process as well. So over the course of the fall and the winter, um, that plan was established. You guys ultimately adopted that at the December 9th council meeting. We went out to bid after the first of the year. Um, we received those bids, that same work group and staff reviewed those bids. We held a, uh, work session with the city council back in March, and, um, we've been communicating all of that information that we've received to date with the community in every single fashion that we have available. With that, um, you've seen this slide before, these are the proposal responses. We did get five bids from four companies. One company provided two different bids. Uh, that company was actually the low bid, uh, for both their, um, consolidated, uh, service that they provide through the Mid America Regional Council to three of our neighboring communities, Fairway, Roland Park, and Westwood. Um, but they also provided the low bid, um, if we were to not go with that consolidated contract. A question that we frequently have received is why didn't some other companies bid? We don't know the answer to that. There's a number of companies that didn't bid, uh, they didn't reach out to bid, they didn't inquire to bid. Um, some of them did participate in some of the process, but I don't want to put words in their mouth as to why they didn't ultimately submit bids. Um, I'm happy to do so, uh, if the council would like me to reach out to those, but, uh, at this time, if they didn't bid, we weren't going to go back and inquire with them. But you can see here, uh, the low bid, um, is GFL. Uh, they not only hold the Mark Consolidated bid, but they were our, uh, essentially second low bid as well. So at the, um, March work session, uh, staff made this presentation and, um, with kind of general conversation, uh, ultimately decided to move forward with negotiations with GFL for, um, contract details, which are included here. Uh, this was included in your packet as well, um, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions around these. But this is the Mark bid, like I said, that our neighboring communities have as well. It is with GFL Environmental. It is, um, weekly trash recycling and yard waste services, all picked up on the same day of the week per residence. It's a five-year agreement starting in 2026. Um, that monthly rate to the contractor would be $19.50. Um, as you can see, we are allowed to charge an administrative fee based on the administration that's going to take staff to do. Um, that's going to be approximately $3.50 per month, bringing the total cost per residence to about $23 per month. There is in the contract annual increases, um, on, on an annual basis, there is a CPI for trash and trash collection specifically, but the contract does, um, say that that can be, that can only go up to 3%, capped at 3%. Um, GFL is offering 65 and 95 gallon bins and weekly yard waste year-round for up to 10 bags or bundles, uh, or containers per week. Um, in addition to that, uh, GFL is also offering two amnesty weeks per year specifically for yard waste, so if you would like to exceed that 10 bag or bundle, um, per week, you can hold it for the spring or the fall event. Um, at this time, the city's not considering changing, um, our services for our, uh, tree debris pickup or our bulky item pickup. Obviously, if the council chooses to move forward with this, uh, contract, we'll see what impact that has on those services, but at this time, we're not considering changing those, so this is just another opportunity for residents to get rid of that yard waste. Um, as I mentioned, yard waste will be year-round. Um, a benefit to this contract that actually wasn't included in our base bid was, um, GFL is offering up to three bulky item pickup per month. Um, obviously, that will be communicated with the residents on how and when and what. Um, however, um, it's kind of a bonus that they threw in there for our bid. Um, if the residents would like, they could have an additional trash cart at $10 per month. And, um, in addition to that, if residents want to go over their bins for trash, there are overage stickers available for purchase, uh, that will again be communicated very clearly where. White goods, so goods that can't be collected for large item pickup, mostly items with freon, can be collected at $60 each. For those who qualify, we still have to go through what this process is going to look like. But for those who qualify, they can have garage-to-curb service. So if they can't physically take their bins out to the curb and back to their garage, they can work with the city and we'll verify that that's the case and notify GFL that they need garage-to-curb service. Because of state statute, there's an 18-month waiting period after the council adopts the ordinance that we're doing the first reading of tonight. So assuming we've moved forward tonight, and then assuming we move forward on the 28th, the earliest start date that we can do is a November 1, 2026 start date. As I mentioned, we've discussed this every single possible time that we could do so. Not only in our Highlights Magazine. We created a dedicated webpage on, a page on the city's website that has the opportunity for the community to provide feedback that goes into essentially a form that we receive that from. You all have gotten the responses to those. All of our social media channels. We even sent a direct mailer postcard to every single residence, making sure that they had the information to appropriately have a conversation about this topic. You can see here, these are the topics that we've heard the most about. We have answers to all of these questions. I would be happy to answer those right now. I'm assuming they're going to come up when we get public comment. So I don't, I don't want to be repeating myself. So, but I'm happy to do so. We have answers to the questions here. And again, we have a dedicated webpage that also has a frequently asked questions section that answers all of these questions as well. We still have a number of steps to complete, assuming that you move forward with the process tonight. Again, the ordinance and the contract will be adopted at the April 28th city council meeting. There's going to be so much public communication moving forward, not only from the city, but from GFL. Part of their contract, they're required to provide annual notices of anything. Schedule changes, holiday schedule, what happens in inclement weather, et cetera, things like that, that they need to communicate to their providers. Again, we need to create that process for garage-to-curb service and what that's going to look like. Obviously, we'll need to work with the provider for bin, not only distribution, but the current providers for bin pickup. Notifying them of the termination timeline. We need, as I mentioned, to evaluate the in-house large item pickup and tree debris pickup programs. Like I said, at this point, we're not planning on changing either of those services. But if in a year or two, we start to notice that this contract provides better service, then we might want to reevaluate those. There is a clause within the contract to allow HOAs that have consolidated trash services already to not be a part of this contract. They're already self-negotiated as part of a larger contract. And then, as part of the budget that you all passed this year, kind of contingent upon this process, we will hire administrative staff to help us with this program. I'd be happy to answer any questions now, or if you'd like to hear from the public before I answer any questions, I'd be happy to wait as well.
Let's get the candidates for you to answer their questions first, so then we'll have them come forward. And then we may have you come back and answer their questions. So, any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Leahy.
Can you go back to the frequently asked questions? Can you just touch on them briefly? Because I know a lot of those are going to come up.
Yep. Yep. So I'll just go bullet by bullet. One of the number-one things that we've been asked is there, is there an opt-out option? The, the simple answer is no, and that's because that's the process that we're in right now. You can opt in and out of your services you are right now. If we had an opt-out provision of a consolidated contract, it would be almost impossible to bid. If we didn't know the quantity, that's the reason that you go to a consolidated contract. You get economies of scale based on the participants. And if we don't know the number of participants, it's going to be really difficult for a provider to bid appropriately. I don't know of a single other community that does a citywide contract for solid waste services that has an opt-out provision. It's just not feasible or manageable at the administrative level and then also at the provider level. Any questions on that? The next is performance standards. Google is a nice tool. It's an easy tool to use. The thing about the internet is anybody can write whatever they want on the internet. I'm not saying that the things on the internet aren't true, but we've done our due diligence in checking GFL, how good of a provider they are, how good of a company they are. We got great references from every single one of the references they provided. I will say that was not the case for all the providers. There were providers that responded that gave bad references for whatever reason. But GFL did not have any bad references. Are there any questions about that?
So they're operating in three of our neighboring communities, all quite successfully without any major complaints, correct?
Yeah, actually, on the, on the Kansas side are our direct neighbors, but they are even managing the larger side, like the city of Belton uses GFL. They're a larger community than Merriam. They were one of their references, and they don't have any issues at all. Like I said, that was not the same for all the providers that responded. Okay? The next one, and this is, this is the one that's not going to be a fun conversation. We hear that residents currently don't have trash service. And while the code that we have is not definite black and white, we believe the intent of the code was for all residents to have trash service. So not having trash service, you could argue that you are not following the municipal code.
And, and county code.
And county code, that's correct. Yes. City code and, yes, yes, thank you. Our code mirrors the Johnson County code as well, yes. So not only were you not following municipal code, but you're not following county code as well, which is a different process if we wanted to move in that direction. Are there any questions about that?
Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
Is that, would that be, just be considered like a code violation that we would track? And then it could go to code, like court if they contest it and all that kind of stuff?
It would. Yes, we would move it through the municipal court process. We have not ever, but we also haven't gotten, have not gotten complaints on it yet to date. Okay. The next is market competition. This is a very valid argument. If individuals are interested in market competition, I will say that we went to market and we asked the market what their bids would be, and we let them compete against each other in the bidding process. Everybody, all providers got the same opportunity. They got the same level of information from the first day we started this process up until literally today. I've been communicating with all of them. So even though the ones that bid and responded didn't get selected, we're still in communication. Because you all haven't made a decision at this point, I didn't want to opt anybody out, assuming we move in one direction or the other. Everybody got the same level of information, therefore could reasonably and responsibly provide a bid. Again, why did some companies not bid? I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if we really need to know the answer to that question, but they had the opportunity to. Questions on that?
Go ahead, Ms. Chivetta.
As part of that, can you talk a little bit about the contract with Mark and what that means as a cooperative?
Contract, too?
Absolutely. Yeah. We actually didn't even have to go through our own bid process. But to be due diligent and good stewards, we thought that that was the best process. The Mid-America Regional Council has already gone through the bidding process, establishing essentially the contract that they operate for, again, those cities of Fairway, Roland Park, and Westwood. We could have easily gone through the statutory part of this process and just called up Mark and said, hey, we want to, we want to opt into your bid. But again, because we wanted to be, do our due diligence, we wanted to make sure that all providers had the same information and the opportunity. In addition to the Mark contract, we just wanted to make sure that we knew what those prices were and what their responses would be before we brought anything forward to you all. Okay. The next one, which I believe we're also going to hear tonight, is are there senior rates? Currently, providers will discount rates for seniors. Again, we went through a very competitive bid process. I'm not going to say 100% of residents are going to save monthly. But the bid price that we received, if it's not close or under, if it's not equal to or under even what individuals are paying at senior rates, it's probably very close. So there's not a specific separate senior rate, but the rates we received as part of the bid process, almost all around, are significantly cheaper than what residents are paying already. Are there any questions on that?
No.
Okay. The next one, which is also a topic of discussion, is some providers currently have 35-gallon bins. We did bid, we did bid three different gallon sizes, 35-gallon, 65-gallon, and 95-gallon bins. The overwhelming feedback we got from all of the providers is while, yes, some of them provide this size of bin now, the industry is moving away from the types of trucks that can service that size of bin. So whether it's now when we rip the Band-Aid off and we don't provide 35-gallon bins, it will happen in the future for all providers. So while you may see 35-gallon bins out there, no new 35-gallon bins are being distributed, regardless of the provider that you're going with. There was one company that said we could pay a little bit more. I don't know how they would do this, but we could pay a little bit more to have 35-gallon bins. And I guess, I don't know if they'd service them differently or what that process would look like. But it was not even close to, it was the highest bid that we received. But other than that, industry standard is moving away from 35-gallon bins. Questions on that?
Go ahead, Ms. Chivetta.
Did they mention or talk elaborate more on why they were getting rid of 35-gallon bins? Like, is it a safety issue with drivers or things like that?
Yeah, it's specifically related to the trucks that they're moving to. The type, the way that the trucks load currently can service a 35-gallon bin or a smaller bin size. The new trucks that they're moving to, which is not all trucks, but at some point it will be, can't service the smaller bin size. It physically falls into the truck. It's a huge maintenance issue. Then the residents don't have bins, and we got to do a bin changeout. It's a big enough headache for the providers that they're completely moving away from that service.
Okay.
Okay. And the last frequently asked question that we have up here, again, we have an entire webpage of so many questions that we have answered on our website, merriam.org/troshservice, which cover topics more than this. But another topic that we've heard quite a bit is what happens for my current service cancellation? State, as I mentioned, state statute has an 18-month window in which individuals can get off their current contract and then get on to the city's contract again, starting November, if we go on the same schedule, starting on November 1st, 2026. There will not be cancellation fees. Once you all adopt this ordinance, other providers won't even be allowed to service residential units in Merriam anymore. So there will be no contracts to void. There, they won't be allowed to charge a cancellation fee, I guess, if that answers that question.
So my understanding is then if I, my contract comes up before ours goes into effect, they would then just stop their contract and would then implore GFL to take over for, until we get on the system? Now, do you know if they would be paying the new rate at that point?
Yep, that's a good question. Something that we're still talking about with GFL is what happens for residents whose contracts end before our contract starts and their current provider will not go month to month? That's, that's certainly an option. You could go month to month with your current provider until November, October 31st. But as I mentioned, we're talking with GFL, and they seem very open to kind of rolling into a contract. Whether that be our contract rate, we don't know at this point. But they certainly are open to that negotiation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
I have three quick questions, just for confirmation. So before we entered into this process, I didn't understand what white goods are. So just to clarify for people here and people who may be watching this later, white goods would be refrigerators, washers and dryers, or other appliances like that?
Yep.
Okay, and that was a $10 fee?
I believe it's $60.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, $60. I was still thinking of the extra bin. Are those items picked up by our large item pickup as well?
Most, without going item by item, most would be picked up.
But people would have to hold on to those items until our two designated items?
That's correct.
My other question, you might not have done the math, but when I did the math initially on the nine, the $23, if the cost goes up 3%, say, then the following year, that's only 69 cents for residents.
Correct. I'm sorry, I don't have the math right in front of me, but yes, that's correct.
And then the last question I had is, I saw people here taking pictures of the screen, but they can view this if they download our packet or if they go to the website?
Yep, absolutely. Everything that's included in this packet or in this presentation is already currently available on our website. It's also obviously included in the packet tonight and as part of this presentation, available on multiple different ways that you can look at it.
Thank you, Ms. Silvers. Go ahead, Ms. Cozmeier.
Yeah, so I'm sure you talked to the people at Roland Park who administrated the contract. But just from a resident standpoint, my parents live in Roland Park. And when I told them who you guys were looking at, they were excited for that because they've had only good experiences with it so far.
Great.
All right. Do you have anything else?
I don't. I'd be happy to, we can do public comment, and then I can come back up if the council has any more questions.
Any more questions for Ms. Gard before we move to public comment up? Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the exhaustive amount of research and input you've, and all the work you've done along the way.
You guys are very welcome.
Yeah, to you, I know you steered that whole committee for over a year, and the whole committee did an excellent job. I know you spent many, many hours looking at all aspects, and we really appreciate that. Okay, well, we will open up the public portion for coming forward on this particular topic matter. I do have one person that has signed up currently, Wayne Hooker. Sir, if you'd come forward, give your, to the podium and give your name and address for the record, we'll just start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wayne Hooker, 1028 West 53rd Terrace. I would just like to voice support for this single, proposed single hauler service. Our present provider, they keep raising the rates and the service keeps going down. It's kind of like the Kansas City Star. Anyway, this will no doubt, provide uniform rates for single-family homes, which we live in. Everyone I've talked to that has a single-family home are paying different rates, and I don't understand this. And our particular service, the last quarter compared to this present quarter, there's a difference of $14. Like I say, the service keeps going down and the prices keep going up. So hopefully, this will provide uniform for everyone in, in at least single-family residences. I don't know what they're charging for apartment buildings or commercial. But anyway, I just wanted to bring out a point here that not only it would be, in my case, a lower-priced service, but it would be a lot less truck traffic. Instead of having nine trucks come around in our circle, there would be only three, apparently. One for trash, one for recycling, and one for lawn waste. Also, too, our present company is very unresponsive to complaints about missed service. They're very nice to talk to, very pleasant individuals, but nothing happens. It's usually if they miss their trash, or usually it's the yard waste or the recycling. They say they'll be right out, but it doesn't happen, and it's the following week if then that they pick it up. So I just hope that this can be implemented as quickly as possible. I think it would be a benefit to everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooker. Okay, now, no one else has signed up, but that does not preclude anybody from coming forward. So as you raise your hands, I'll try to just call you. Why don't you come forward, sir, and give you a name and address for the record?
My name is John Sandin. I live at 6812 Wed Street, 6812 Wed. I appreciate the thought that's gone into this regarding traffic reduction. But I want to point out Prairie Village has had trouble with single hauler. I'm not well-versed on the details, but some people in my family have done some research. And we don't think Merriam should go this route. And it, it limits residents' options. And I appreciate and respect all the research that's gone into this. But I want, whether it was addressed or not, I want more to be considered than just the lowest bid. And it appears, from the presentation, that it was. I just want to point out that this company, GFL Environmental, has had bad, Better Business Bureau reviews and workplace reviews and environmental issues that can be looked up. And I haven't gone to verify the accuracy. I just want to, people involved, I want them to consider these things. I won't take up any more of your time, but thank you for hearing me. Thank you for having us to.
Thanks for coming forward, sir.
Should I sign?
I, I put you in, and I think we have it on record, so, thank you. City Clerk has got you down. Okay, sir, in the back, come on forward. Name and address for the record, sir. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Al Osterhaus. I live over in West 65th Place in Merriam here. A couple of questions. The $3.50 administrative cost, what does that get us? What is that for? And will we get any, what's the purpose of the admin cost? Does that mean we, the homeowner, would pay the city every month or do we pay the trash hauler every month for service? I don't understand why Merriam's putting a $3.50 admin fee on all this and I think that should be taken off. Also, I'm concerned about the five-year contract. Why not a three-year contract? Who came up? I think a five-year contract is a little bit excessive until we see what the provider will provide. If during that time we find out that the hauler that we select doesn't meet the standards, can we terminate the contract? We need to know that. I'm really concerned about some of this stuff, so. So anyway, hopefully the council can answer some of those questions and why a five-year contract, not a three? And what's that admin cost gonna buy us? And who do we call if we have a problem with the trash hauler? The city, the city of Merriam or the trash hauler themselves? So anyway, I think we should look at that and maybe get, not charge us for three, that admin, I know it's not a lot of money, but the purpose of that, what is that money gonna be used for? What's the city gonna use that for? So that's all I have.
In my way, Ms. Guard, address all those questions at the end. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, in the back, sir, please come forward. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I'm Billy Cron and I come to you this evening from my beautiful Merriam neighborhood at 6633 Wed Street. Staff already listed our neighbors' objections and told you one by one why they don't matter. So sorry if I'm wasting your time to speak for myself, but I'm going to. I can give some council people a second to see me? Okay, good, thank you. Where does it end? I'm not going to say that GFL is bad. They're probably fine, except for the environmental and workplace issues we heard about this evening. I'm not going to complain about the price. It's not a terrible price, but this is about more than just money. I speak tonight about something I hope that is more important to all of us than money, which is freedom. Many months ago, city staff presented pros and cons about single trash hauler programs. There were slides created by this very same staff who are today pushing single hauler forward. Even the city administrator who supports the move admitted that this would eliminate a free market in Merriam and that slide itself and its own, and staff's own words, said it was a step towards communism or socialism. Surely, this being a city election year, none of you want more socialism in Merriam. This isn't just about trash, it's about control. This is about government stepping into one more part of our daily, every day or every week lives where it doesn't belong. Where do we draw that line? I looked at my property tax bill today while I was wrapping up my 1040 and we already paid property taxes for the county, the state, county parks, county libraries, school district three separate times, the city of Merriam, the Merriam Drainage District, and I'm sure I forgot a couple of things on there. It's a long list and you're about to add another thing to it. How many more light items do we need? Do we really want to add one more mandatory, permanent and out of our control? Single hauler trash service sets a precedent. If we let the city take over trash hauling today, what's next? Lawn care, snow shoveling, pet waste patrol? Will the city provide internet next or deliver groceries? Will the city decide what kind of light bulbs we should use or what color to paint our homes? Once you invite government into making choices for individuals, it's very hard to get it out. This is not what government is for. Government is not and cannot be an asterisk wild card to do everything and anything. It must remain limited. We cannot let government become our caretakers as generation after generation forget how to take care of themselves. Americans fought and died 250 years ago after the government wanted to control T in Boston. And here we are today, 1,000 miles away, giving up our freedom. What would the forefathers say? We need less government in our lives, we need more choice and we certainly don't need another bill every year for a service we can take care and have been taking care of as private, independent, self-sufficient individuals all this time in Merriam. Please, don't let this be the moment where Merriam starts down this slippery slope. Thank you.
Mr. Cron? Do we have anyone else would like to come forward this time? Okay, ma'am, okay, wait, wait, let me get one of the, okay. Yeah, please give your name and address for the record.
Okay, Connie Hill, C-O-N-N-I, 9103 West 69th Street. We've lived there 31 years and we've had, oh, I'm sorry. We've had three different trash companies involved because, of course, I shop around and the first one was $80 every three months. Then it got to be where they were slipping on how they treated you and didn't always do what they say they were gonna do, so I shopped around. Second one was $130 every three months. I said, whoa, that's way more. But the company I'm with now is $90 every three months and it's WM and they've been excellent and they have totally done what I've asked and so I'm really happy with them. Now, the price that she has is a really good price, but I don't know anything about this other company, as a lot of these people don't, or if they do, I don't know. But being a senior and retired, you know, we gotta get what we can get, but I'm very happy with where we're at, so. I, that's why I came tonight, because I wanted to see if this was really something that was gonna be better or something that we're taking a chance. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, council, okay. All right, ma'am, please go forward now. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Terry Stanker. I live at 6423 Hadley. A couple of questions. I do agree with the guy about a lower contract, is that possible? Do you know if that's possible?
Yeah, we're answering all questions at the end. She's.
Because I have, I have talked to someone who has had good luck with the company. There are a lot of bad reviews about the company as far as missing pickups and their customer service. So someone asked, would we be talking to the city if we have a problem or would we be talking with the trash company? So that would be one thing. Another question, do we pay the trash company or do we, is it part of our taxes?
You sure answer all those questions, just ask your questions and she's to keep track of them, so.
Oh, the other thing is, we always get notified if there's a holiday or something we're not gonna get picked up. Would that be part of it? And that's a minor thing, but it is a nice consideration. But I strongly would maybe like to see a shorter contract and if they're good, then we can extend it, but there are some negative reviews about this company. It doesn't save me a lot of money, but I'm all for the one truck coming through my neighborhood. So, thank you.
Ms. Stanker. Okay, in the back, sir, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I am John Sankey. I live in West Vernon Place, 10121 West 65th Drive. I understand what you're trying to do, the efficiency of collecticism, I can understand that, but the problem for me is that you're taking away my ability to choose who I do business with and what I want to purchase and what I don't want to purchase. You're taking away my ability to cancel some hauler if I don't like the way they're doing their service. You're taking away my ability to hire somebody that offers particular services that I want and I don't have to pay for ones I don't want. So it's a matter of freedom of choice in the United States and I see this as I am losing this freedom.
Thank you, Mr. Sankey. Okay, in the back corner, please come forward, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
My name's Tammy Pittman-Stolman. I'm at 10104 West 55th Street. Been in Merriam all my life. My family was on Merriam Drive for 55 years, so I've been to many of these, not recently, but I've been to many. My concern is that it's going to be on my taxes. I don't need anything else on my taxes. I want to be able to have the choice as well, to pay it every three months and to also choose who I would like as my vendor, just like I do with everything else. I am very pro about having trash trucks, four and five of them in front of my house every day, because on Wednesdays, I do see four and five different trash companies all day long with my Ring camera. So I think that's great, but I still think that we need to have a choice. Merriam needs to allow us the opportunity to make our own choices and not choose for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stolman. Anyone else would they like to come forward this time, sir? Please come. Name and address for the record, sir.
Bill Carter, 6506 Goodman Drive. Formerly, I was a professional engineer and I can assure you that your move to one single hauler is a really good use of the resources that you've paid, we've all paid for our streets and we are, they are being destroyed by these, all these different haulers, not simply by their weight, but by their untidiness and their leakage of hydraulic fluid on our pavements. And I've personally witnessed that. A couple of questions. Have the hours been established when the haulers will come and go? Secondly, the last time I moved away from a hauler, they tried to rob me for returning the cans to their place, so hopefully that's been addressed. And I think everyone deserves the right to say whatever they believe and have a belief that's what this country's about. The thing I think people are missing is about choice. You don't have a choice for power, you don't have a choice for water, you don't have a choice for sewer, you, do I need to go on? So a lot of things government provides because it is a benefit to everyone not to let it go everywhere. And that's why Johnson County is successful, because we've not let five different water companies run us. We didn't let 10 different sewer companies run us. We have government and top-run government agencies, so. I applaud you guys for doing this and I don't buy green bananas, so if I make it to November 2026, yay! Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else out there this evening would like to come forward? Okay, I think somebody behind you is keeping up. No more calls, sir. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Stephen Hill and I live with that woman back there. Same address, I think. You are city administrator, is that what you are? What is your title?
Assistant city administrator.
Okay, so you work for city?
I sure do.
I needed to know if you work for city or trash company. Number one, I do agree with the three-year contract first. Number two, I agree with getting the trucks off the streets because they are tearing the streets up. They're on their, in front of our house, we get them four days a week. We even get them on Saturdays. And as far as everything else goes, city of Merriam's an excellent place to live. I love living over here. I just think that they need to take in consideration of the, how many days a week they're gonna be there, the time they're gonna be there and what they're gonna charge. And what we could also do, the city of Kansas City, Kansas, has their trash figured in with their utilities. So the utility company actually makes their trash payment and there is no fees, no $3.50 fees or nothing like that, because it all went to, went to the utility company. The homeowner doesn't have a trash bill. He pays his utility bill, he gets his tractors. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else need, would like, yes, please go forward, sir. Name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Stanker, 6423 Hadley over in Vernon Place. Just one question and it has to do with whether or not this process has been decided to actually happen or whether we're still debating about whether we're gonna have it happen or not. So that's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Thank you, sir, okay. Anyone else would like to come forward? Okay. Seems like we've heard a variety of people come forward to speak about that. I think Ms. Guard has been diligently writing down all of your questions and she's going to give us the answers, hopefully, to any of them that she knows, so.
Would you like me to just go down my list or would you all like to ask questions first?
Oh, well, do the list first. Yeah, answer the list and then we may have some follow-up questions, as council.
Sure. I do apologize, I didn't cover payment structure or how that would work. Overshot on my part, I apologize. But a number of our residents are correct. This cost would be assessed on the biannual property tax bill that every residence receives. Residents will not pay monthly, residents will not pay the city monthly, the residents will not pay the hauler monthly, the residents won't pay the hauler directly at all unless they have additional services outside of the contract. The costs for the service will go on the property tax bill. It will be another line item on the property tax bill, but again, it eliminates your monthly or quarterly bill that you pay directly to the hauler. Does that answer that question?
I'd just like to clarify, just for people like me, that maybe it's not sinking right. So services outside of the contract would be like the white goods that I had mentioned. So if you have a refrigerator that you need picked up before a large item pickup?
Correct.
That's $60 you would pay to the trash company.
Correct.
But everything else will be on your tax, your standard rate.
Correct.
And your standard rate that's on your tax bill is in lieu of you paying your, what we all are currently paying to the trash hauler of our choice.
Correct.
So it's basically just taking what's from, being paid to this hand to this hand.
At a cheaper rate, I'm going to guess, yes.
Thank you.
Just doing rough math, that's $130 twice a year, if it's $23 a month.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, next.
Part of that question was what the administrative cost covers. In addition, there are a lot of comments about what customer service would look like. One of the biggest things that we heard residents during this entirety of the process is the issues and struggles they've had with, they've listed every provider and the customer service that, levels that they have at the company level. The single hauler work group that wrote the bids was very adamant that we wanted that customer service level to remain at the city. Therefore, any customer service complaints, any contract complaints, your trash is missed picked up, they threw it all over the yard, whatever it is, all of that's gonna come through the city. We are gonna have to hire an extra person to help with that administration. That is included in the 2025 budget already. We haven't hired that person, we were just waiting on this process, but the customer service will go through the city and that's the, most of the administrative cost that is incurred. The state statute does allow us to charge an administrative cost, going through the mark bid also has. Going through the mark bid also has an administrative cost. That's included in the price that I've provided to you this evening already. In addition to that, it happens, but people don't pay their property tax bills, so we do have a little bit of contingency in there for instances where that does happen. And then a very small price is included in there for public communication. We realize that we're going to have to do mailers and lots of communication around this, probably at least on an annual basis, more upfront, but at least on an annual basis. And so we included that cost in mailing within the administrative fee.
If I could add to that, just, just for clarity, the 350 for the admin position pays for half of the admin position. It's a, it's a .5 FTE. The other half will have other duties as assigned within the administrative support function. So it's just half of an employee.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ridda, go ahead.
Oh, so that the administrative fee goes to the city to pay all of this?
No, it's going to be one number on your property tax bill.
Correct, correct. But of that split out, the 350 is going to the city, and the 1950 is going to the trash hauler?
Logistically, it all comes to the city, and then we pay the trash hauler, is logistically how that works.
Ms. Ridda, go ahead.
Thanks. For customer service, so we'll have a number to call at the city, and then we have a personal, the city has a personal contact at GFL.
Absolutely.
That we're not just calling a customer service line at GFL. We have like someone's cell phone number that's available 24/7.
Yep. A number of people, actually. Yes, there's gonna, per the contract, there's an onsite supervisor that's literally going to be with the crews whenever their pickup days are. And then we do have like a, I don't want to say a regional manager, but essentially something like that, that we have contact with, yes.
I thought it was in the bid, I just wanted to clarify.
It is.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, move on.
Okay. Contract term, why is it not a shorter contract? We heard frequently, actually, we originally had this written as a three-year contract when we opened kind of the work group meetings and invited all the haulers. Substantially, they all said, you're going to get better bids the longer the term of your contract is. It's really hard for us to recoup our costs within three years. In addition to that, if you go really long, it's really hard for us to project how long or what cost's going to be in 10, 15 years, however long that long-term contract is. So we kind of settled with a sweet spot of five years. It's, that's customary and normal. All of the other cities that do this process have a five-year term. The Mid-America Regional Council has bid five-year terms. Included in the contract are provisions for not performing. Not only are there penalties that increase with each instance, but there are clauses to terminate contract if service levels aren't met. So we're not stuck for five years. We hope that there aren't any issues, but we're certainly not stuck to five years if contract terms are not met.
I was just going to comment on the contract. The termination clauses are pretty loosely worded that if we are unhappy with the level of service, we can get out quick or over an extended period. And the city could at that, at that time, choose to rebid with another hauler for the entire city or to go back to individual service if, for some reason, we made that choice.
Correct.
Mr. Silvers.
And it's pretty customary for us to do five- and 10-year contracts, like with Axon, Axon that we purchased for the police department. That was a five-year contract, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
And that's a company that we have never done business with.
We currently have our, our body cameras are with Axon.
But that's relatively new.
Yes, it is.
So.
And I will say, for example, the contract you all approved earlier, or late last year, with the Overland Park Fair Department, that's a 20-year contract. So it's not unusual to have contracts. It sounds like a long time, but it's really not. It's pretty customary.
Go ahead, Ms. Kozmire.
Do you know how long Fairway, Roland Park, and Westwood, I think you said, have had their current contract or their total length of service with GFL?
Yes, this is going to be their third extension. So I believe the original contract was in 2016.
No, I think they did their first contract in 2018. And they did, the original contract had, sorry, I'm putting my city of Westwood city attorney hat on right now, but they, they did, they had a couple of one-year extensions that were automatically built in and rolled over. And then they're now doing, under the exact same bid, they're doing five years, just like it's being proposed here. And, and, yeah, and, and so, you know, Westwood has been, has done single hauler, gosh, at least 15 years, probably. And I can't speak for Fairway and Roland Park, but we did the collaborative thing with Fairway and Roland Park. It's, I want to say it's probably every bit of that 13 to 15-year window.
Go ahead, Ms. Ridda.
On that note, do they also have the administrative fee for an additional employee to operate?
I can only speak to Westwood. Westwood is a smaller community than you all. So I'm, I'm not sure how much of an FTE they've got built in. Like, I can't speak to what Roland Park or, or Fairway have built in, so.
They, they don't. Sorry, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Specifically, in our case, we wanted customer service to go through the city. Those other three cities, if you live in Westwood and you have an issue, you don't call City Hall, you call GFL. In our community, we wanted to make sure that customer service, not that GFL has bad customer service, of course, but we wanted to make sure that you're going to get someone local. And that's why we put a half of an FTE in the budget to solely support that function.
And I can add to that, too, if I can. In a previous life, I was in Prairie Village, and Prairie Village is about twice our size. And we, we, when I was part of, we had a full FTE that dealt with trash. In the community, it was twice our size. So it, it, it checks out on the napkin.
Go ahead, Ms. Ridda.
I just wanted to add to that, because I was on the work group that organized a lot of the things in the bid, and we wanted to increase the level of customer service that went along with this, and we knew that people were going to be calling the city anyway. And this was a way to help make that the actual point of contact to resolve issues.
Yep, fair, yep.
Mr. Silvers.
Sorry, I just, you know, we tend to talk in acronyms. I just want to clarify that FTP, FTE is full-time employee.
Full-time employee, yes, one position, and this would be half of a full-time employee.
Go ahead, Ms. Hands.
And for any questions about the longevity of GFL, I live in Edelweiss, we live in Edelweiss. And they were town and country. They've been taking care of Edelweiss Town and Country, and then went to W.
C.A. WCA.
WCA, I was going to say the other way around. So they've been around for a long time, and I've never had to call anyone at Edelweiss or at GFL to complain about my service.
Okay.
Okay, good on that topic. Okay, next topic. Was kind of about how that communication would work if there were needed notices of service changes, annual holiday schedule, what that would look like. Per the contract, GFL is going to have to provide an annual, whatever we're going to call it, piece of education, public education, including all that information. It's going to include, call the city at this number, here are your holiday, here are the holidays we're not going to pick up, any service changes that they're going to have the upcoming year. That's going to happen from GFL on an annual basis, and I am certain we will do it at the city level as well. Questions about that? There was questions about, are the hours established for pickup? Yes, that's actually included in our municipal code already. The hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Thank you, Brian. But as I did mention, trash recycling and yard waste will take place on the same day for your residents. So it's not like on Mondays, you're going to have trash. On Tuesdays, you're going to have recycling, and on Wednesdays, you're going to have yard waste. It's all going to happen on whatever day of the week you end up assigning, being assigned. And we're going to certainly communicate with that with you as soon as we get that information.
Just a, a little bit of a side. Obviously, they can't pick up the whole city in one day, so it'll probably be broken up into quadrants, maybe, something like that.
Yeah, we certainly have not gotten to a level of detail. I would assume they also cannot pick up this whole city in one day. But again, we don't have that information yet.
But hopefully, no Saturday pickups.
We can certainly write that into the contract. Additionally, we did, within the contract, put provisions for picking up trash on arterial streets during rush hour. That is going to be restricted, so we don't mess with traffic on arterial streets.
Ms. Ridda.
I know the contract hasn't been solidified, but I think the estimate was four days to the entire city.
Yep, they bid four days, so whether that's Monday through Thursday or Tuesday through Friday, yep.
Mr. Silvers.
And I just want to point out that I think the stability in scheduling that we're all going to experience is, without having people hiring trash companies and then firing trash companies, their routes will be consistent. So if your trash is picked up at 8:00 a.m. on Mondays, it will be probably close to 8:00 a.m. on Mondays from now until the end of the five years, until we maybe decide, well, if we adopt this, decide to extend it. So that questioning of whether, like, do I need to put out my trash, like, at 7:00 a.m. to make sure it's picked up, and it doesn't get picked up till 5:00, will kind of not be a mystery anymore.
Yep, that's very logical.
Go ahead, Ms. Ridda.
Can you clarify what arterial streets are?
Yes, I'm sorry. The majorly traveled streets, Antioch, Johnson, there's more, but the larger streets.
Does that include, like, 61st Street, or like, how, no?
I can get that information for you. I have a list of arterial streets somewhere.
Yeah, thank you. Just because of the schools, that's really why I was asking, because it really is terrible for school drop-off.
Yes, that's an easy, easy fix.
All right, next, I think.
Okay. There was a question about cart pickup fees. That's what I mentioned earlier, current cancellation of service. If the service were to go beyond November 1st of 2026, it's no longer valid. So that contract is void, therefore, they can't charge any cart pickup fees. But if service is, it wouldn't be canceled before that. You would essentially just roll off of your one-year contract, so then you would have no contract to cancel. We don't anticipate any cart pickup fees for either of those reasons.
Mr. Silvers.
If a can, a contract gets canceled with a trash hauler, if this goes through, trash hauler that's not GFL, can they refuse to pick up the carts?
I'm sure they could.
What would the city do if they refused to pick up the cart?
Depending on the severity of the issue, we would have to talk about what that looked like. But I will say, if the hauler cancels the service, first, they, they bought those trash bins. They're capital expenses for them, so they want those back. They're not just going to let hundreds of bins go, because then they'll have to replace those. I don't want to speak for them, I don't, I'm assuming that's true. I can't imagine a scenario that that would occur, but we would certainly address it, of course. We're not just going to let bins roll around the city forever.
Thank you. Next.
And then the final question was, are we still debating this? Yes, I've said every single step of the way, you guys can walk away at any point. We have put a lot of work into this, but even tonight, we can walk away from it. Even on the 28th, we can walk away from it. And as we mentioned earlier, even after we establish the contract, there are out clauses of the contract, so we can walk away at any point. Those are all the questions I had, please let me know if I missed any.
We, should I call somebody back up? I don't know what's the protocol, and maybe I'll talk to them. We have somebody wanting to come forward, can I see in the audience, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's usually when you open up the public, I mean, it's not a public hearing. It's up to you as the chair, Mr. Mayor, but.
Sir, if I could just have you come to Ms. Guard after the meeting and ask your question, I think that would be the way. But I, I did see your hand, and, and I would request that you talk to Ms. Guard after we're done, so. Okay.
I just have one last comment. The review comments that everybody made concerned me, who came up to the podium. And so I asked my best friend ChatGPT to go to the internet and pull together star reviews of the, not only the services that we offer Mariam, but also the ones that were on the bids, just to make sure that we covered everything. And all of them are one or two stars, according to the internet in Kansas City. So I don't think that anyone likes their trash service. But I wanted to put that out there, that one or two stars is, is everyone's review. And, you know, how reliable is AI? I mean, you can question it as much as you want. But I didn't want to make sure that, that the table is, sure that the table looks to be somewhat level based on the research that ChatGPT did for me.
Any other questions from the council for Ms. Garden? Okay. Do you have anything for the council?
No, I, I was remiss to say this at the beginning. We do have members of the work group that are here in the audience, and obviously, the council participated that, in that as well. Thank you for your help. Definitely couldn't have done this all by myself. I guess the only other thing I would say is that we're asking you to do the first reading of the ordinance this evening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garden. Well, we've heard a lot, and, you know, I appreciate everybody showing up this evening to speak either for or against moving forward with this, this project or this endeavor. I, I think, you know, it's a lot for us to take into consideration. As was noted this evening, we could still back away or stop this process at any time. But having said that, I would entertain a motion of this evening.
I'm a little uncertain on how we do a motion on a first reading.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I can.
Yeah, Mr. Dean.
There is no motion.
There is no motion, I guess.
Right, that's what I said.
It would just be.
It's just the first reading. It's publication and the first reading.
Right.
Well, please.
So we've, we've done that, right?
We've done that, we've done that.
We've published already.
Please do not make a motion at this time.
Right.
Ms. Hands, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had that on my list.
I know.
Yeah. Okay, so we've had our first reading. Again, we, we appreciate everybody's input at this point. We will be discussing this at the next council meeting as well. So, and at that point, I assume we probably will have a motion. Oh, Mr. Engel, go ahead.
Just wanted to ask, is there anything from a staff perspective that staff needs to be looking at or looking into between now and the 28th to help the council with the decision on the 28th, if that's what they would like to do?
Ms. Andrich.
Will the vendor be here for that? Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Engel? Okay. And should you think of something between now and two weeks from now, feel free to reach out to Mr. Engel and ask him those questions, and I'm sure we'll have answers for us by the next council meeting. Ms. Ridda.
The only comment I have is, I think there's a lot of people here tonight, and we appreciate you being here, but if you have neighbors or, you know, other people you're talking to, please have them reach out to your councilperson or the mayor or Caitlin, share the website. You know, we want to make sure everyone's getting their feedback heard, if they can't make the meetings.
Good point. All right, well, I guess we will move on to the next item. It looks like we have an April CIP update, I think it's next on our agenda this evening. Thank you for coming. Dr. Kumpke is coming to the podium. Oh, I think you're off.
Okay, let's try that there. The April CIP updates in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I did want to remind everybody that the CIP tour and lunch is next Friday at 11:30 at the Community Resource Training Facility. So looking forward to presenting that information. And does anyone have any questions about the report?
Any questions, Dr. Kumpke?
I, I'm just following up on them. It's saying that a hearing in District Court is scheduled for the 10th.
So the hearing was held on the 10th, and really, what that was is appointing three appraisers. So then the appraisers' hearing is actually going to be in City Hall. I think it's, it's May, May 8th or something like that. I don't have the exact date in front of me. And so that, what will happen then is that they will present their findings, and then here's our cost to pay those, and then we write a check, and then the property is released to us to be able to construct on it.
And how many properties are still open for that kind of situation?
13.
13 still? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Ridda.
I just have another question about the 2025 street and drainage project. So. So did the gas company mark something recently along Sixty-first Street that you're aware of? I had a lot of residents that were kind of concerned about all the flags that were out, but I don't know if it was, I assumed it was for, because we have plans for that project now.
We do have plans, but I don't know of what the gas company would be doing.
It's fine. Just was curious if it was tied to that project.
Do you know it's the gas company? It could be the water. Water One has to get in there.
Yeah, I think it's gas, based on the residents that have told me, yeah.
I mean, right now, there's not gas work planned on that project.
I guess just to see where the, I didn't know if it was just this year or the lines were for the, I don't know. I was just curious, so that's.
Sorry, I can't provide more. I will, I'll reach out and try to figure out what's going on with it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Could that be AT&amp;T? Because they're all over my neighborhood right now.
They don't have plans, as far as I know, to do work there. Water One is planning a relocation. They have a lot of main breaks close to Antioch, so they're planning to relocate or repair or install new water main about five hundred feet just east of Antioch.
Okay, thank you. And then that project bid last week, is that right?
Yes, it's out, and bids will be open May first.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
Just a quick question about the Water One work that's happening on Forty-Ninth Street at Antioch. There seems to be a possible unrelated leak now at the corner of Antioch and Forty-Ninth. And so I don't know if the city's aware of that and if it's going to be addressed.
Let me check it out tomorrow, and I'll let you know.
It's on the north, northwest side.
Okay, but it looks like a water leak?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's coming from one of the manhole or the water.
Okay, I'll take a look at it. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kumpke. We had informational items again on Park and Rec Advisory Board minutes and the Plan Commission minutes. Does anyone have any questions for either the directors concerning those? Okay, looks like those are in our packets. Mr. Engel, do you have anything for?
Just a couple of dates, or really kind of hold the dates. Next week is large item pickup for all of our community. We've got on the twenty-second, we've got the trail cleanup that we do every year. Residents are more than welcome to participate. Prescription drug takeback on the twenty-sixth, which will, I think, occur at our PD. Isn't that where we do that?
I think it's at Walgreens.
Walgreens, I'm sorry, at Walgreens. And then I will be out the rest of the week, but we'll check email if available. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from Mr. Engel? Okay, well, and we have no executive session this evening, I'm aware of. I think we're down to adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Okay, we have a second. Ms. Andrich.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.